Kerry is still working on that market. Basically, some students are having issues with the online format. However, many students were transitioning well to the online format. So Kerry and the counselor are working with each student individually to evaluate the success of the student and the appropriate measures for moving forward. Also, the ed solutions have provided a tutor to the students that were having a little bit more difficulty as well. We also discussed the opening enrollment for the schools for the 21, 22 school year, starting in February. Elementary school is hosting three, four K informational sessions in preparation for this. And Kerry was going to begin to work on something for like the fifth graders going into the sixth grade and the eighth grade going into the ninth grade. And that's it.
Great, thank you. Building and grounds. We are going to have a reporting administrator's reports. Do you have anything else?
Nope.
All right. Finance committee met right before this meeting, Mitzi?
Yes, finance committee met right before this. We just discussed vouchers and payments and made sure we were on target there. We looked at budgets for our individual schools and our principals are promised budgets by tomorrow in their bill for their buildings so that they will know where they stand currently and how much they have for the remainder of the current school year. We also looked at budget variances and it appears that forecasting is that we will be under budget in all areas with possibly a few exceptions, however, it still looks like that is very possible. We also were presented a calendar for our budgeting purposes for the school year of 21, 22, partially being hindered by our current state of Wisconsin and their inability to work nicely together as kindergarteners show. So that's enough of my political statement. And that's it for finance committee.
Administrator reports.
You go first.
All right. So on the elementary side of things, we really enjoyed the first three days back. Right, it's transitioned nicely. It was great.
Can we, Brad, do you think that's picking up well or should we?
It's not. It's not going to pick up at all unless all my good luck.
I tell you what, no, it will pick up well because of this.
Oh, because that will look, okay, okay. This is the worst stuff.
We're recording with that one.
Yeah, you're recording with that?
No, we're recording with the laptop.
Oh, then the microphone in front of you don't matter.
Yeah. It should be okay because he could hear you through the fire.
Okay, all right. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Teachers met with students of concern this last week and we've based solid plans for the next four weeks or so of intervention and supporting students at all levels. We started our four K enrollment campaign and already got four students who have signed up to enroll if ever rehearsed. There are informational minutes coming up that have been planned and we try to offer a variety of times of day and dates to meet family need across the first three months. And then we'll do the same thing again in June, July, and August so that parents early in the morning will be caught and those parents who kind of realize, oh, I am a kid for, will catch that in the summer too. Our community outreach has continued at the elementary. We're working really hard right now on rebuilding and reestablishing our PTO. We have a lot of parents interested and we hope to fill those officer roles here soon and engage at each level. I have teachers who personally identify one family or two families from their classrooms that they're reaching out to communicate with and encourage parents to join together since we are providing sort of that homeless school PTO crowd. It's very important that we make that personal connection. In addition to that, we also received a donation of strawberry milk from B through VP. And it's sort of, it's a mutually beneficial arrangement where we can save on this pricing and then students get a wonderful donation of strawberry milk, which is something different but exciting when you're at elementary school. And we're working with our fifth graders as leaders and distributors of it and work on the organization and the milk counts and distribution of that. That's from like the fifth grade leadership level. So all friends are moving progressively and I'm excited to see what's across to our trimester holds.
Thank you. That milk donation is twice a month?
Yes, maybe twice a month, yeah. And we're working, I should say, with the into a healthy food network to get a snack that's combined with the milk donation. So that'll be school-wide regardless of income.
On the special ed front, we've had a little bit of roller coaster with staffing separate health issues and things like that. But I will say that our team is really working together and picking up the slack and picking up other kids that aren't necessarily the case load. We've got this, making sure that all of our kids' needs are being met. I shall shout out, just tell me that little Dodi Duli is kind of grueling at high school and elementary because they have been working through the overloads trying to make sure that everything is good. Not all of their needs are getting more good, but they're fabulous and they have been helping the odds. On people services front, the L committee is like meeting, getting together, trying to focus half on our staff and kind of wellness and making sure that we're checking in with our staff. We started doing wellness Wednesdays. Started in January, we're giving a code throughout the day, or code at the start of the day. It was kind of inspiration to get a code and a calendar and events for each month that will have a different S E L. It's good that we can do as an adult for self-help, so. We are also kind of working on pushing to the next phase of our S E L development. So we're working more with looking at the competencies and standards that each grade level may have for our students. And we've got in-service day planned with some trainings for the staff. We're really going to get them together and look through all of those competencies and look at each one to see what are we doing in our classroom? Are these S E L skills being impressed through our curriculum or through different activity or through our guidance lessons? And really breaking it down to the specifics of what is already incorporated? What do we need to work on? Where do we need to focus? Or we're working with our grade level teams and then in the business with our specials with piano music and all of that to try to make these across. And so we're moving with that.
Tomorrow would traditionally be the start of three days of final exams. With COVID and attendance issues all over the board, we are not doing traditional final exams and both different are not. So we're going to have three normal days to end the semester, which those of you who have kids that have had kids, this is the first time in my 20 years here we've had three normal days. It will really allow the teachers honestly to do more names, which they need with their classes. So that's been great. As Katie said, return from break has been good. I knock on wood, our proper number right now looks really good. That could change tomorrow. So everything right now looks really good. So maybe this Reddit Christmas, whatever, it won't happen, but we'll see. I have been meeting for the semester with my kids who are both on virtual. I have one, two, three, four, five, I believe, who are going to return to the building. I have a few more to meet with. I'm going to probably have a handful that stay out, but I think it's going to be a really, really small group. So that'll be nice just to get kids back to the building and help the families feel like, they feel like we've done the right thing and kind of taken a breath and all of that. I'm sure you've seen my email about Jefferson County Health Department reaching out, moving forward with the vaccination thing. We don't really know anything. They just are on me big time to get names. So I'm going to be sending them 30 names that we as an administrative team deem as high priority. So we'll be looking at kind of lead-based positions. You know, there's only one special ed teacher doing one of this, one of that. Obviously, except, you know, my high school teachers have a way different exposure rate than Katie's 4K teachers. And then we did ask, I mean, once to disclose any other factors they think we should consider, so we have that as well. You know, we shared a really good document from DPI about what should be considered, help with as far as making decisions. So we will try and make it fair and quick as the decision that we run. Couple things about Spanish, not that Indiana didn't do a great job, but we will look for a real, a human teacher next year. I think that's one of the things that a lot of parents, and I know I said that to most of you, I heard your own policy, but we will post position and we will look. And I do think for the most part in talking to the kids, now that they understand the logistics, a lot of them can do the program and don't have as much of the issue with the content of the program. Yes, we would prefer that, right? I'm definitely not going to say we wouldn't. But we haven't given up on ever having a live human teacher Spanish again. And this is where we are for now.
Is there, back to the COVID and the 30 teachers you're going to list? What's the timeframe for when the rest of the staff?
So we will give them the 30 and then we will give them the full staff as well. I don't think they honestly have a timeframe for either. What it almost sounds like is they are expecting at some point I'll tell them that as well, like to be done at Ford Healthcare or done at whatever and then not know where to go. And they would like, I mean, they literally sound like they're going to call you and be like, why don't you human it and get your vaccine?
Yeah, the 30, the priority list is if someone is on the list and they're doing command and you say, you know what, I don't want to get it, then they'll call someone else and you have to be ready to go. Literally, I don't hold this note, it's going to happen. They're doing it with all the districts. So it's going to be quite a bit of, you know, scheduling on their part.
Is Waukesha doing it as well since half our districts in Waukesha?
We are saying everyone, we sent all of our district names to Jefferson County because I have heard nothing from Waukesha County.
They've got it there, but I don't know what, I will find out tomorrow morning. I'm on the Waukesha, that is called, the Florida.
And if we, I hope it was clear at least, it's not required, obviously. And how can that exist doesn't mean they can't ever get it. You know, we're just looking for staff members who want it or feel they have high risk and need it and that type of thing. So it'll be interesting to see. I have zero idea on timeline. I don't know if we're talking two days, two months, two weeks. I don't know.
We have staff to get the information back because we sent out the surveys and then the pillow.
Yeah, I think, I think so.
Yeah, I think that we asked to have that one.
Yeah, so my hope is to get the 30 names, the adminologists who contacted us through Jefferson County. They have a meeting Thursday. So Mike, he said to me today, if you can get me the name by the end of today, tomorrow, that would be the best. So what I got for 30 priorities is what's going to go to him and then the rest will just go on a secondary list we sent to them as well. And we have over 30 staff members right now who have asked for it. So we for sure at least will meet the priority threshold.
Anybody else have any questions for this group? The other administrator report is your building and grounds.
I'll talk to them a little bit. So, hello. So building and grounds, it's a little confusion. We were supposed to have a committee meeting tonight. I was not going to be available and then I became available. But I did ask for some things virtually so I can report on our board meeting today. Those items were, you know, where we stand with our AC rough prepared recommendations. Was the playground ever taken care of? What does our vehicle fleet look like? And then we had kind of a concern over the access to our minor elementary school. So of the four things that I sent out, I got six things back. So that was interesting. It seems like we're probably going to have to have a building and grounds meeting because we now have a recommendation in our hands for either a repair or replacement of one of the AC units. Excuse me, this thing is done with the mask. So we're going to, one is a $50, $100 choice on repair or a $17,000 replacement cost. So we're probably going to have to have a meeting to discuss to send it to finance so we can have a good plan moving forward. The next piece is that I do have a list of seven different vehicles in our fleet. Not necessarily with some recommendations, but they did find a food service van so that we're going to have to have a meeting to discuss so we can send it to the financing level. It looks like it's a really cool van, so I really hope that we can be timely on that. It looks like we did get the signs up and everything was repaired at the playground, so that was good. As far as the P, the PES building, I have a list of absolutely everyone and anyone who has access to that building. Good Lord, how are you going to manage any of this? I haven't met with my committee, but I think they might follow suit and agree that this is a district thing that needs to be maintained and that so forth. I have two other things that came back that were not part of the original request. This one is a request from the Madison Scouts Marching Band. Obviously, due to COVID last year, we typically rent out our facilities to these different organizations. I don't know if this is really a board issue. I think this is more of a district decision. You know, I would probably put this in Tuskings. If there's any concern, we can bring it back to building grounds. Talk about it in our next meeting. And then the other thing that got tossed at me was, you know, I'm not, I don't admit to be a rocket surgeon by any means, but I do not know what a bipolar ionization generator is. But I'm going to tell you, it's right here and it's what I'm like. Essentially, it's supposed to be for the kids, it's supposed to help scrub the area clean here, but I don't know a darn thing about it. Heck, I didn't even know that they made for these things. So I think this needs to become part of our building and grounds discussion. So it feels like we're going to have to have a meeting. But other than that, I mean, we all seem to be moving along just fine. Things are good. We'll set up a meeting maybe for next week. That's not reported.
Anybody have any questions?
We have a long talk about ionization generator.
Bipolar.
Bipolar, yeah.
Bipolar, right.
I know, I heard that when you started, I'm like, whoa, no, this is for me.
I'll make sure I invite you next week.
You'll ask me why the second word.
And we have a motion to approve the consent agenda. I'll make a motion to approve that consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve on that. Minutes from December.
I have concerns when I know from November's minutes as well. So I think you needed a motion in the second minute.
We had a motion in the second, so we'll put. So Zach then was in discussion on wanting to pull December or amend December.
Amend December and November.
You guys have the specifics?
Yeah, I already told her, yeah.
Okay.
So we have to, we have to vote on her motion.
Well, her motion.
And then we have to deny it. And then somebody has to make a motion.
And then make a second motion.
To amend.
Okay.
Right? Pretty sure.
We can do it a couple of times.
Yeah. Well, I second her motion so we can vote up and down, right? And approve it?
Yep.
So all those in favor of approving this consent agenda as printed, say aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so that motion fails.
Okay, I will make a motion to, as the consent agenda is written with the exception of the minutes of December and November.
I'll second.
Any further discussion or amendments?
Can we change it? Sorry, I debated on whether or not to second it, but can we make it with corruption of minutes rather than the exception? Can we make the corrections to the minutes so then we can approve everything?
Okay, how about this?
I'm sorry.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of corrections to November and December's minutes. Correction?
With the corrections of the minutes.
With the corrections of the minutes.
Not exceptions.
To November and December.
I think that's the right way.
So I would be, I'm lost. So I'm going to approve the consent agenda as long as we're correcting the minutes from November and December.
And what are those corrections?
Your motion is second of that, but can we know the corrections? Like you have asked.
Action item A in December is incorrect on the vote. I'm not sure about November.
November's correction is consent agenda item C or D, one, food service A, B, E, F, A, S, D, five hours per day. That was moved to closed session. We did not handle that in consent agenda. That was moved to closed session.
Okay, so we just need the minutes. We're actually reflect those two changes. And then when they're posted online, they'll be posted with the changes. Does anybody else have any questions on those changes or any other? Okay, then all those in favor of approving the consent agenda with the changes to the minutes, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Action items.
A.
Consider approval of district space and program availability for 2021, 2022 open enrollment applicants. We have all that information in our packet, Michael.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that Mitzi nixed 12.
She made nix 12B.
Oh, 12P. Okay, not all of 12.
Right.
Okay.
Just 12B.
All right.
So we've got 12A that we need a motion for.
I'll make a motion to consider approval of district space and program availability for the 2020, 2021 to 2022 open enrollment applicants. I'll second.
I'll second. Any questions or discussion?
This is, this is different than the current school year.
Yeah, the only thing that will be different is related services. So because our therapists are kind of over towardly there, their case load is right now. We would be denying any student that has a low speech level.
Yeah.
We're a little tight with our regular numbers at the elementary school and some of our grade bands. But upon discussion, we don't want to deny an entire family or have an entire family, you know, like we feel like we can move some things around and make sure that our therapists are after a little bit of the number of hours in a day.
Would that be a staffing consideration? If we did have more families that we did want to?
We'd have to hire on more.
This is something that, is this a discussion point? Can I ask? I can ask.
Yeah, we're in discussion.
So if we decide now, because we're at limits and with what we have, can we go back, make a hire and then open that, change the open enrollment to include the specialism that I E P still?
I don't know the technicality of if it can change.
I mean, this is just for someone opening enrollment. So they come in and they say, we need this and we're, we're, it would give you the ability to say, no, we can't take any more kids for this particular program. But if it brings me another family members or other kids in the district, like we were getting actually, you could then say, okay, you can come in and we have to. You know, you might not have to do the staffing facility though. I guess we're, where things are at, we believe. But you wouldn't be able to say, yes, we can do this with the anticipation and we would have to hire a full-time, part-time and help us to build it.
It's my understanding that that wouldn't affect between now and the end of the school year we're still under.
No, it would, it would.
Be from summer until that third Friday.
This is just basically a forecast of that. It was a year, I get that. I'm just saying that, you know, to kind of piggyback, Doris was asking was if we hired someone, you know, who'd open that door back up? It sounds like we can, so.
You are dealing with hard-to-bill positions in related services and typically higher-priced employees as well. So I think that's one of the reasons we talked about the cap in terms of the related services is you may not be able to fill that position and then you can't be admitted if you have issues as a result. But as opposed to like what Haley said, while we are tight as a very band, we feel we can still serve those kids that get a lot of certain, you know, right yet and don't need those related services.
And then I also did add the, we know that from what I did see at past board meetings or recommendations and past, we don't have to kind of have it open. We didn't have any other wreckage about siblings or if they're one of our students that moves, wants to play water but still want to come here. So I did add the wreckage in there to add priority. You know, that we wouldn't want to keep away one of our current students.
Okay, any other further questions or discussion?
I'm just wondering, I think it's well thought out, well researched and I completely understand the idea that I'm wondering about like our Neola aspect because this is a policy that we're adding. If we would want to run it past them in any way or?
This is.
We're required to.
Hey, this is getting long.
It's not a policy.
From everything that I've read in research, it does have to be in the January word. Yes.
Okay, that's what I.
Before February.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I just wanted to make sure that we didn't have.
I'm hoping I'm accurate, that's what I could figure out from what I've researched.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. District administrator and business manager report.
Okay. Board of lectures are set. We have two open seats and we have two qualified candidates, so that should go pretty well.
We don't have to do a primary, right?
You don't even have to campaign, but anyway, that's great. I'm going to be working, I'm going to be working with Caitlin on some PR information to go off next week or so because open enrollment period starts February 1st. If people are thinking about, well, I don't know a lot about paperwork, we have the things going down here. Furthermore, people get open enrollment. I mean, they always have the option to come. In fact, we want a lot of help because we're good, we're open for business and hopefully we get back in. And then we will do some things on open enrollment in terms of hopefully attracting students from other districts. I think the fact that, this is great for the staff, that back when you've been in person, lived every day, people don't know this yet. And we're already, we're seeing some people wanting to come in and get some inquiries saying, when can we, when can we decide? I'll be honest, I'm hoping that this whole thing is all done. I'll begin.
How about smart?
I was saying, you know, again, I think we're in a good spot here to pull some of those people back in as well as people who are present. The last few days, we had a few issues with this stuff. So the debt isn't one of it all. So I dusted up my textbook called the checklist. So I'm going to be working with, it's a real one.
Case turn.
But I'm going to be working with the administration to develop a checklist for all of committee agendas, the board agendas, or, you know, what committee reports that go into those agendas so that each month we just go by it, pick off each thing, let us headlines to it so that we avoid some of the, some of the issues. Now, we did, I mean, honestly, I was in panic today last night. It's like, you know, email. Fortunately, finance was actually closest that we were there. But those are the kind of things you want to see the night before. I was already suffering from the big tents. And then you see that. So anyway.
Sorry.
But I think, I think, you know, it's in shape and you've got some new people in place. We've got some cross-training, saw someone missing. You just have to go right down the checklist to make sure that these are all. We can use those in a number of other areas as well, but that'll be our first start. We'll be in depth for tomorrow at our boarding administrative meeting.
Well, and I have to add a couple of things. So, well, yes, the things I think are working very well with both the new, you know, payroll and accounting specialist and also assistant.
I can close their speaker again.
Yes, sir. Okay, is this better?
Yes.
Okay, well, it's very. Okay, so I think things are going very well with both the, you know, our administrative personnel, that the new people we hired, both the, you know, the AP and position district office executive assistant and the payroll and accounting specialist. We are, the checks that are coming in. Well, everything is working better with them. It's just, I jumped to another subject, which is the property tax checks that we're receiving are, are, seem to be coming in as normal, as you would have expected in a normal year, so I don't expect any, any huge variations. Hopefully, we'll be not needing to use at all the line of credit that we requested, but as we said, it's just insurance. The new B card paperwork has been turned in. I just received a call this morning with questions about our BBB designation, but I think it's going to go through quite well. We're starting to move on, the, you were asking to move into, at the beginning of the year, at least when I came in, to move to Infinite Campus, and that's no longer available. Infinite Campus is a, that's a financial management tool. So, what had to be done is move into cumulative, which is the new version of, of Skyward. And we're even discussing moving all the students' side as well, and it should be, it looks like it's a much better tool, redesigned entirely, and we should be working with a, you know, if we started next year, it would be like, for $2,500, we would have the migration entirely into the new system, so it makes a lot of sense. That's for the financial side, though, I haven't gotten a quote on the student side, but between Ryan and I, I think we have, we can reduce the costs quite substantially as we have for the financial part, which is only going to cost us like $2,500. And for next year, we would be talking about reducing our costs for Skyward, you know, instead of.
Now, we lost the idea of the Osteo.
Okay, so, what, did I, just, we're moving into cumulative, and it's a better system, it's going to be cheaper, costs us less than Skyward, and we should be better off because of it. Ways, we're looking into ways of reducing our cost of transportation and energy. I was just starting to talk to a person today of a bus company, that they're willing to give us service, and they're looking for, you know, to have a good quote with us. So, that's, that's encouraging. We're working on redesigning the website, there's already a draft in place, it's waiting for approval of, you know, going through the different parts that need to approve We just. That should save us money. Well, it's the cost of the phone service. And we were.
Our audio is not working.
Oh, sorry.
Can we ask her or write to her?
Sure.
Yeah, we, why don't you, why don't you put that out the report, and you're breaking up very badly, and so.
Okay, I'll put it in an email.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be good.
Thank you.
Thank you. And just to kind of piggyback on Todd's comments, and thank you, all of you, thank you, Brad. This was a kind of a goofy weekend of trying to, you know, we have new people, we have new committee chairs and everything, and I think it all pulled together really well, and it's, it's very encouraging to get emails back on Sunday night at 7:00, and, you know, it's 6:00 in the morning on a Monday, and it went, you know, it's, it's working, it's could be smoother, absolutely, but everything worked, went well. I think buildings and grounds, we're going to meet again, and we got the information we needed, and the others were posted, I was chipping away at the ice this morning. Make sure. So, I think everybody's petulant just about, we want to do things right, we want to get things done, and everybody's really willing to jump in and be flexible. So, thank you, everyone, for all that. Okay, can we have a?
Can I, can I make a few more comments?
Yes.
Okay. Let's try and go quick. So, I wanted to touch base on a couple of things, mainly donations, and share our sincere appreciation for all of those that support the district students here. I know we had on the agenda a donation from Blair Commercial Painting, that's actually a hand company in West Dallas, and they submitted a small donation to be used for the tech ed department and help promote the trades, knowing that that's a very important thing. We also received, the band boosters club received two substantial donations this past month. We've got $1,000 each from both Standard Process and Palmyra VP to support, become a lifetime Friends of the Band Booster members. They'll be getting a plaque with their names on it in the school, recognizing their donation and their commitment as a lifetime friend. So, we really appreciate their support, and with the band program is really growing and developing, so that helps, especially in a year when a lot of the normal fundraising activities haven't been able to take place, so that business support is really appreciated. And then we also, the district also received an anonymous donation before the holidays of $3,500, and the district was able to use that to support families in need and provided them gift cards for the holidays. So, we really, really appreciate that, I can tell you, I know some of the families have benefited from that, and they were so appreciative of that, it just made their holidays so much brighter, so we thank you, the people behind that, that was awesome. And then I also wanted to give a couple of shout outs. With all of the lack of spectators and live streaming and doing that, I wanted to give a shout out to our tech, tech department, although it's not probably shining so brightly here tonight, but I just wanted to say that the live stream event, I've heard so many good things about when we're streaming here. Shout out to Nolan, who has been fabulous as the voice of the Panthers, and just doing announcements, I've watched so many of the away games, and it's just horrible to watch because.
We're even famous.
Yeah, and everybody is really impressed with the job that we're doing, and being to enjoy it somewhat from their couches at the community and blazers. And also, a big shout out to, Nolan was graduate last year from PE, and kind of his sidekick, Brandon Wild, also a graduate last year, is coming back, and Brandon has been a huge host to the basketball program, and has really stepped up and taken on an awesome role there, entering, supporting coaches, helping the boys, and just filling in and running practices and being available. So, I really appreciate that, and I think it just means so much more, and we have graduates that literally just walk out our doors, coming back and helping us when we, when we need it, so I appreciate that a lot. And then one last thing, I just wanted to share a quick good news. I was recently selected, I was nominated, and ultimately, I found out I was selected to be on the board for the Wisconsin Alliance of Excellent Schools. That's an organization that kids excellence in public education for Wisconsin, and it kind of works underneath the Wisconsin Public Education Network. But what's really cool is they've been impressed with what's been going on here in Palmyra Eagle, and they really were excited to have a voice from someone that is here, and the rural and the small schools have kind of been underrepresented on a state-wide level. So, they were excited to have someone from this area give some input and help represent schools like us across the state, so I think that's a really cool thing, when people are talking again about excellent schools, that we have an actual representative that will be able to say yes.
Congratulations.
Absolutely. All that, and the applause, and the good stuff.
Any other board comments or announcements? Okay, can we have a motion to move into closed session, under the state statute that's listed on your agenda?
I'll make a motion to consider, to adjourn to closed session.
We have a world call vote.
Christina Williams?
Yes.
Mitzi Roszewski?
Yes.
Jane Reed?
Yes.
Doris Parsons?
Yes.
Zach Rapowski?
Yes.
Michael Eddie?
Yes.
Harley Roy?
Yes.
Okay, we are now into a session, we will reconvene to open sessions where action is appropriate. Closed session is over, thank you all for coming. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Al, thanks, Al.
Thank you, have a good day. Good evening.
Bye. Good evening, Al.
Thank you.
We got to stay. Who's going to go watch that?